...for Monday, May eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, with the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners. We'll start with the lower side. Thank you.
Please, everyone, rise to the plate.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are the United States of America, and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business would be the consent agenda, which has three items on it tonight, the minutes from April twenty-seventh, public hearing for annexation and the public hearing on the manager's budget. Any comments on the consent agenda? Any items to be pulled? I'd like to pull item number two, the annexation hearing. Do we have to make that new business? Number two, I guess. Any other changes to the consent agenda? Not to hear, but motion to approve as modified.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unopposed, the consent agenda items one and three are passed. And now we do. The regular agenda. With the one modification. Any other additions? I have a motion to approve the agenda as it is.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unopposed, the agenda is approved. Before we get started on the citizen matters, I'd like to give a word to Alden for a moment. I just want to take a second to congratulate our town manager on a significant achievement. Last week, he graduated from the USC School of Government, of course, for city and county management. That's no small task. It's not a two-day seminar where you drive up and knock it out in a couple hours. It's a long commitment spread over several months. I think it's about six, one or two sessions. There's a lot of homework involved, and it speaks well to his dedication to the town that he was willing to undertake that and that he's finished it and has enhanced his education with respect to state level government here in North Carolina, and needs to be congratulated. So please join me in congratulating Mr. Bruce Beck. And then we'll move into citizen matters. I have three speakers signed up to speak, first being Randy Bowler.
Mayor, I like the ring of that. Nice and simple and in the public. Good evening, Mayor Terry, Mayor Pro-Town Baldwin, and the Town Board of Pittsburgh. My name is Randy Bowler, and I reside at Twenty-One Randolph Court in the town of Pittsburgh. I come before you today to compliment your work and make a request. So, I didn't know about Brian's thing, but Brian, you started that a long time ago. Congratulations. I echo what Bill says. So, thank you. But congratulations on the town, its staff and leadership, on your recent ranking of R State Digital that lists Pittsburgh as one of the top five day trips in North Carolina. This is a testament to all the work we have done over the last ten years and certainly speaks well of the common vision we have all shared. I'm not sure if you've all had a chance to see who we're on the list with, but if Pittsburgh is on the list with going to the beach, I think that's pretty darn good. They mentioned the Carolina Tiger Rescue in lunchtime down at Hillsborough Street. I don't know whether they're going to Verley's J or they're going to S&amp;T's, but they're talking about going down Hillsborough Street. They're talking about Roy Underhill. They're talking about Becky and Ben Starr and Starlight Mead. And they finish up with Roadhouse and General Store. So I think the fact that R State Digital is putting out Pittsburgh as a top day trip in the state of North Carolina means that the leadership of this town and its staff and its advisory boards deserves a thank you. So please give them a round of applause because that's a very good honor. Now, I'd like to offer up a quick request that the town would formally request that Chatham County, an item I brought up months ago, would buy its water from you and implement an agreement to do so. I know we're heading into a budget season, something that I had the pleasure to do for eight years. I had more hair on my head then than I did here. But I know that that budget is going to come out, that we're going to need money in enterprise funds, so again, I'm going to ask, let's make the request. Furthermore, I offer a resolution regarding infrastructure that was passed at the Chatham County Democratic Party's convention in April, and I would believe that the Republicans would probably pass a similar resolution if it came to them. But it's a resolution to establish a regional solution for wastewater. It was unanimously supported. Pam Baldwin was actually at the convention with me. But it says, whereas investments in infrastructure are key to the long-term prosperity of Chatham County, and whereas Chatham County and the town of Pittsburgh have studied the prospect of cooperating with each other with wastewater processing and discharge, and whereas Chatham County and the town of Pittsburgh conducted these studies with Sanford as a partner for a regional wastewater system, therefore be it resolved that the Chatham County Democratic Party respectfully requests that the county board of commissioners seek to conclude studies and implement a reasonable method of regional cooperation between the city of Sanford, the town of Pittsburgh, and Chatham County regarding a long-term and affordable solution for Pittsburgh and Chatham County wastewater needs in the Cape Fear River Basin. So I thought I would offer that for your record. I'm sure you'd get broad-based bipartisan support for something as reasonable as that. Thank you for your time.
I want to mention that the article that Mr. Bowler mentioned, there's a link to it on the Town of Pittsburgh Facebook page. So if you haven't seen it, it's on the Pittsburgh Facebook page.
Thank you, Mayor Bowler. The next person listening to speak is Casey Mann.
She's not here right now. Mr. Mayor, she's not here yet.
Okay. Meredith Bowler?
Good evening. I'm Meredith Bowler, and I currently reside at Twenty-One Randolph Court, also in Pittsburgh. A little bit about me, I have over twenty years of experience in sales, marketing, events, and hospitality industry in urban locations such as Chicago, Portland, Salt Lake City, Los Angeles, and actually, most recently, Madison, Wisconsin. That festival game, by the way, is painful for me, but I'm over it now. Actually, in the near future, I was hoping to bring my skills to the fore and get a hotel approved and opened here in Pittsburgh. I'm a city girl, but I moved to Pittsburgh because of the community that my father and my brother helped nurture with their work, starting actually in nineteen ninety-five, also twenty years ago. I'm happy to be here, and I'm looking forward to being a part of the exciting future that's ahead. To that, I'm here to humbly request that the town of Pittsburgh institute a program to honor citizens who have contributed to the welfare, livability, the public good of Pittsburgh and the greater community. I ask the town of Pittsburgh create honorary names for some streets, greenways, and public places to reflect the rich heritage of its people. If the town is willing to create such a program, I ask that Southern Park have an honorary name as well, L.A. Bowler Park, my dad. My dad, deceased father, L.A. Bowler, or as many of you knew him, Lot Bowler, passed away actually three years ago, almost to this very date of this request. My dad was a worldly man, yet he chose to make Pittsburgh, North Carolina, his last home and resting place. My dad really loved this community, and he embraced all of the future possibilities. He voluntarily worked on local boards and supported many of you. He especially loved the parks south of the town. He'd walk his dog there pretty much every day. When I'd come and visit him, he'd take us there and his dog's sugar to Southern Park to walk with him. His pride in that park and the enjoyment of his time there was obvious. Since I am now living in Pittsburgh, I would like to help create such a program or establish a committee to honor our beloved citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. That's unless Casey Mann has arrived, that's the end of our public expression period. Okay. We go on to citizen matters to our regular agenda. Item number one is amendment. It'll be called an interest-advantage plan development district.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bruce Beck and Mr. Babs kindly decided that I should present this to you. This matter was before you had your last regular meeting for a public hearing. Since then, the matter has been referred, was referred to the planning board, which has met and adopted the consistency statements and recommendations that are in your agenda package for all three ordinance amendments. And it's now before you to consider the three amendments, and I would respectfully request that you address them in the order in which they've been presented in the agenda package. The first is the amendment to the zoning ordinance, which would amend section ten point four point three B, which is intended to make the provisions of the zoning ordinance comply with the state statutes with regard to when the consistency statement should be considered by the town board in passing on a resuming amendment. The text of the proposed and recommended ordinance is included in your agenda package with the text of the ordinance amendment itself, and also a statement regarding the amendment as exhibit B to that. The other two amendments are labeled in your agenda packages as one, two, and three, so that we can try to keep them straight in order. The second is the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance that would create the planned development district. Again, as you mentioned earlier, this is the same text that was presented and adopted by the town in April two thousand and thirteen. The proposed amendment to that effect is also included in your agenda package with the text of the proposed amendment and a statement regarding consistency attached to that as exhibit B. The third amendment is the proposed amendment to the subdivision regulations that would conform the subdivision regulations with the planned development district design standards to make it consistent with the text of the zoning ordinance in case you see fit to adopt the second ordinance. If you all have any questions about any of this, I'd be glad to try to answer them. But basically, these are the matters that you all discussed at your last meeting, and the planning board has recommended approval.
Thank you, Mr. Messick. Any questions from the board members?
Just one, just the minute you said we would vote on each ordinance separate.
Sure. Well, at least in the order which I presented in one, two, and three. I just want to have one motion to consider. All of them, if you'll do it in that order, it will be able.
Okay. Are there no other questions from the board? Okay, I'll just make a comment that I think Mr. Messick made clear in his memorandum of what the purpose of this action is. You know, the comments of citizen public hearings, they say that the primary purpose of this is not to rehash what the board did two years ago, it's to cure defect in the process, and I don't think it would be, I don't think the board, I hear silence from the board indicating that there's no interest in rehashing how we came to adopt these ordinances. So I will call for the vote on item number one, which is an ordinance adopting an amendment to the town of Pittsburgh zoning ordinance, town of Pittsburgh file number ZTA twenty fifteen dash one, amendment to section ten point four point three B. All in favor of adopting that ordinance?
I think we'll need to make a motion, won't we? And I'll make that motion to adopt an ordinance adopting an amendment to the town of Pittsburgh zoning ordinance, town of Pittsburgh file number ZTA dash two thousand and fifteen dash zero one, amendment to section ten point four point three B.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have four ayes and one nay. The ordinance is adopted. There can be a motion on item number two, which is an ordinance adopting the amendment to the town of Pittsburgh zoning ordinance, town of Pittsburgh file ZTA twenty fifteen dash one, planned development district. There can be a motion to adopt that ordinance.
I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance adopting an amendment to the town of Pittsburgh zoning ordinance, town of Pittsburgh file number ZTA dash two thousand and fifteen dash zero one, planned development district.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four ayes and one nay. The ordinance is adopted. Item number three, an ordinance to adopt amendment to town of Pittsburgh subdivision regulations, adding section nine entitled Design Standards for Planned Development District, town of Pittsburgh file number ZTA twenty fifteen dash two. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance adopting an amendment to the town of Pittsburgh subdivision regulations, adding section nine entitled Design Standards for Planned Development District, town of Pittsburgh file number ZTA two thousand and fifteen dash zero two.
Second.
Would you second it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four ayes and one nay. Fix this, old business number two. Page Vernon Park, did I? I think Mr. Moore will just decide.
Well, thank you. As you know, the bids let several months ago came back quite a bit higher than expected to the tune of close to hundred thousand dollars. So rather than bringing that even to you at that time, we decided to work with the low bidder to value near the project back to a level that's hopefully more palatable to the board. And essentially... Sit in your agenda package. Essentially...
Sorry.
So it was topped off, moved up to the back half of the park. There are probably desks back here, walkway back here, there's a turnstile extended all the way back to the fountain. That has been a cut process. But we have, you can, the contractor we were working with had three days sitting around the yard, and down here down to us. Well, we did reduce the size of it. We did add in a few things, like the benches to make it more visible. There is lighting, there are two streetlights that will be essentially on Hillsborough Street. We also have an alternate, which would put back in accent lighting along the deck. The seat wall, and then also some trees, which is to provide additional lighting on the front. So I think it's a reasonable product for a reasonable amount of money, and I prefer the fourth option with essentially the, just the base bid and contingency, a four percent contingency. Base bid with an alternate stone wall that would upgrade the CMU wall to stone veneer. And the second alternate is the additional lighting options that we've discussed.
Well, you want to speak to the fund, where you would propose these additional lights come from?
Of course, sir. This, there is a Parks Capital Fund, which is comprised of funds that developers have put in lieu of developing recreational or park facilities on their developments. This fund is statutorily limited to use for parks projects, for parks capital projects specifically. And there's about fifty-five thousand in that fund, and now we're expecting another fifty-some in addition to that with Powell Place Phase Two E, which is in the pipeline now. So there's plenty of funds there if you choose to pull from that pot.
Do you have any other parks projects that are in the, that might listen to that?
Nothing, nothing in the realm of a catalog project.
I'd like to commend Paul working with the contractor and the designer to, I think, put a substantial reduction on the cost while at the same time preserving what I think everyone will recognize as a quality park. Very, very similar to the vision of the park. It's designed in such a way that you can phase it, and if we find funds that want to put in some of the other features, such as the wrought iron gate, the additional walkway, some additional furniture, and extending the wall, all those things could be done in the future with this design. So it is a good phased plan. While we're considering this, I will also tell you that Mr. Vernon, the gentleman who donated the land, offered this past week to pay for alternate number one. So he really thinks that the stone wall veneer would be much superior product than a split face CMU. I agree. So when considering those options, we can consider the additional monies from Mr. Vernon. Yeah. So I think very gracious on his part to donate the land and contribute to this park.
I was just going to say, one thing that comes to mind is this Bowler, when she was speaking about honorary dedication, that this might be something that the committee could do is to figure out, you know, the benches and things like that maybe could be purchased by an honorary guest to this area.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I think, actually, I like the idea of having alternate option one with the upgrade to the stone wall and additional lining. I was strongly in favor of that additional lining. I really like the idea of the light being in the trees for safety purposes, and I like the water. And I think that's a great idea. And I really think if we've got the fund and the capital in there for the parks, I think we need to utilize that for the parks.
People in town are very excited about this. It's such a pretty space, and great preserve. I have a question about the light that's, that's already being reduced energy, anything accent lighting. So let me make sure of that.
Well, the way it is now, they would be basically like the streetlights. They'll be gas lights that would provide a general ambient light. And the accent light would be more specific and more targeted and strategic. These would be generally overall, kind of soft, gas type of light to them.
So as I understand the lighting, the retaining wall, the seat wall, would have lighting in those units, so they would be casting light out onto the pavers from that wall? Yeah. And then, as I understand it, the other lights along the building wall would wash that wall in light as well. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
I think there was consideration of some dead to the trees, but I think, I think that's, I think there are concerns about light pollution. We'll make sure that it's in the right place.
I think in addition to making the parks safer, I think it'll also help create downtown as a destination for people that are looking for restaurants and going out to clubs. I think it's just going to create, make downtown people like to walk around. I think it's going to help in so many ways.
Well, I think of Commissioner Bioccos' comments about a job well done here. I regret that we had to squeeze this project so hard to lose anything, but that's the fiscal realities, and I think we did the best we could with the money that you were made available to you, Paul. Appreciate that. I'm glad here that it's expandable, so that maybe someday we can go ahead and finish up the back part here. Are you open up against any kind of exploration data on the bid, or is the contractor?
No, he's, he's in the middle of work, and they've been very accommodating.
That's good. Was there any other discussion, or? If not, I'll entertain motions on which option we want to select. We have two things to consider, do we not? One, just like the option, is it a budget amendment to the fund, whichever option we select. I guess the first motion would be which option are we going to authorize the town manager to pursue?
Well, I think we would go with option one, knowing that Mr. Vernon's going to provide the additional funds for alternate one, of upgrade to the wall. So I think that's the way to do it.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Here we have a motion for, to authorize a manager to pursue option number one, which is our third option, and option number two, motion in seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I don't need to oppose, and that is adopted. We need to now adopt a companion budget amendment, which would fund us, that would be page just before the map in here, we would check checkbox, it says option one that provides additional funds in the amount of forty-four thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. So that would be the option we could check. Is there a motion to that effect?
Second, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then the budget amendment, selecting option number one, adding forty-four thousand, six hundred and ten dollars of subject from the Parks Capital Fund is approved. Thank you, Paul. Okay. Item number three, East Street Sidewalk Project, we have grant. Engineer Royal. Royal engineer.
Good evening. So, the East Street Sidewalk continues. On the way to the end? On the way to the end. We got a decent bid, meaning it's within reach. As the memo suggests, it's approximately eighteen thousand, six hundred and eight dollars above our budget, but we have the funds in Powell Bill immediately available. So we're recommending we use those monies to go ahead and support the project, get the contract signed, get the resolution signed. We have to send a complete package to DOT, their approval. As you recall, this is, there's a federal funds of seventy-five percent of this project, so everything's got to be done by the book through DOT. We believe we can get all that done within a couple of weeks of the board approval of everything and commence with the contractor, Cooper Construction Company out of Winston-Salem, by June first, thereabouts. They're anxious and excited about the prospect of working for Pittsburgh to get the sidewalk built. So DOT has offered to perform all inspections and materials testing, which relieves me and others of the incredible burden of going to labs and being out there. on a daily basis. So they'll be here. DOT does have an inspector here already for Chatham Park Right of Way. I believe that's the same gentleman that would be coming over to our sidewalk to do some work, and he'd call in others as needed for materials testing, et cetera. So we do have the easement from Chatham County in front of the Performance Building, so that's all set. Everything else is inside, the DOT Right of Way, that's all set. We've done all the environmental work, so we're pretty much ready to pull the plug as soon as we get a resolution and we execute the contract. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board?
I don't really have a question, but I guess the years that I've been here on this board, we have been talking about this sidewalk. Is there any possibility that that grant would have covered this sidewalk if we had done it three years ago?
It's hard to say. Well, we tried it last year, and that didn't work out so well. But maybe three years ago, that might have worked with the economy being the way it was. But we did discover that contractors are hard to find these days, especially in concrete work. And the ones that we do find come in a premium. And until they start building back their company and having more projects and spreading out, it's going to be difficult bidding challenges. We've got this one, and then we've got a grant, I'll remind you, of the Pittsburgh Elementary School Road, same situation, seventy-five percent, that we can, we have one year to get that built. So we have to consider that very soon.
So that the sidewalk also come from sixty-four?
No, that's from eighty-seven bypass up to the, is it Farrow Road at the baseball field there in front? Yeah, there's that little short reach right there.
So we're, we're not going to be able to get the sidewalk up to sixty-four?
That is a separate contract that we could use Powell Bill money for. That's just, that would be a separate contract.
Are we at standstill on that? Because I know I've loved you to death about it.
Um, we're, we're at a timeout, you might say, looking at easement acquisition issues. So as soon as we get back discussing it again, we can start looking at that again. So.
And one of the sidewalk piece, where does that exactly end? At Pittsburgh Place property right there? Or does it go all the way to White Street Park?
All the way to White Street Park Road.
Okay.
Beyond the credit union. So there's culverts all along the way and what have you. There will be some traffic control issues, especially from the post office. You know, there's multiple driveways, and that'll be a very critical piece to this, keep it safe, et cetera. So.
Fred, I got a question on one of the documents in your package. It's the statement of North Carolina, you verify affidavit from the contractor. Just want to make sure there's none of omission there. It's all got a nice corporate seal in it on a notary stamp. But you didn't check any of the checkboxes that go up?
You didn't receive the whole contract, but, um...
So the other one, I guess I meant down. Down a little more. Yeah, where it says eighty-two on the top. It says, as part of the duties and responsibilities, he's expired. Mark all which apply, didn't mark anything. So did he do that on purpose, meaning that he? Or is that an omission? I couldn't tell.
I don't know. I'll find out.
Yeah. I would have thought that some of those blocks would have been checked, but maybe you left them, maybe, maybe none of them apply, so it looks like on purpose, but I couldn't tell by reading.
Regardless of the detail on this, and we can follow up with that, I think, to be fair to Fred, I didn't include the whole contract because it was, you've seen those before, it was one hundred pages. I tried to include the pages, that kind of provided a little bit of detail and, of course, the signature.
I just still want you to send this to DOT and have them kick it back if that's...
Thanks for pointing that out. I'll look into that.
Okay. Any other questions from the board before we take action on this?
Yeah. Yes, Fred, the twenty thousand dollar figure, is that a fixed fee? Is that an estimate?
Estimate.
Estimate. Could be more.
They estimated approximately ten percent of the contract value.
Okay.
So we rounded it up to twenty and hoped that it would be somewhere south of that.
Got it, got it.
It also felt like it was a smaller project, so it'd probably be less than ten percent pretty comfortably.
Seems like a lot.
Yeah. It's a rule of thumb.
Yeah.
If the board has no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a resolution supporting this project. We have a resolution, this is the third page, is the town, Pittsburgh Resolution Supporting C dash five 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 one, East Street Sidewalk Extension. If I read this correctly, that authorize the manager of the board of the project to NCDOT for a review for the contractors.
I make a motion to approve the resolution supporting C dash five 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 one, East Street Sidewalk Extension.
Move it second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One note? Four eyes on the note, so the resolution passes. To support that resolution, we would need to adopt the attached capital project budget ordinance, which is the last page, where the town will augment the funding, additional contingency, additional funding in the amount of seventy-two thousand six hundred and eight dollars. Is that correct? From Powell Bill funds.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. So your last page is the revised capital project budget, covering the shortfall with seventy-two thousand six hundred and eight dollars from Powell Bill funds. Our motion to approve this, ordinance.
Second.
Move it second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Or rise to one day, that ordinance is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Roy.
Thank you.
Hey, next item is a flat review from Suddles Road Subdivision.
Yes, sir. This is Suddles Road Subdivision in the Chatham Park Plan Development District subdivision plan considered for review. It's proposed ten lots located near the fifteen thousand one US sixty-four interchange, totaling approximately fifty-two acres. You have a couple of items here in your packet, the actual plat itself, and also the overall site layout for your information. We'd like to point out that lot five is where the current construction is taking place for the medical office building, and individual site plans are currently under review for lots four and eight, which will be another office building and then the hospice. Appropriate agencies have reviewed the plat, provided comments or revisions were made based on those comments provided. And I got a little ahead of myself with the recommendations. It shouldn't be for conditional approval, because you'll see the final plat again, and it's such time that at that time, if there's any improvements that are still outstanding, that would be the time for the surety and the subdivision agreement. So the recommendation is just for approval.
So this preliminary plat should identify all the improvements that are to be made in, for the roadways, not the sites themselves or the development on the properties, but to build a roadway, a public roadway, dedicated to the public, and create lots along it to have frontage along that roadway?
This is a little different because we had already engaged in the site plan review process with the medical office building, so we're actually reviewing the roads and associated utilities as a separate site plan.
So if I understand what's happening here, it's, we're just, this is just a simple subdivision.
Right.
The original parcels that made up this piece of the PDD are being set aside for a new survey that we'll be seeing before now, so that when these lots are sold, they can be...
Yes, this is just creating that, what you see, I mean, the lots.
Yes.
Just outlining the, however the parcels used to look like, this is what they look like for.
Right.
That's right. So the, the site plan for the roadways, is that something that's going to come back to the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well...
So this is not going to authorize construction of these roadways?
Yes, sir. I'm going to get it back, but do we get it upside down, sir?
Yeah.
This is the, the medical office building, and this, this portion of the road utilities was approved. And so we're currently reviewing this half and the hospice site plan, as well as the next office building here. And then, in the not-too-distant future, we'll get plans for continuation of this, which will come out here, and the DOT is involved because of the connection. And there's also this credit cost.
So would this dedication be to the town of Pittsburgh or to NCDOT for public roadway?
It wouldn't be a town street.
And the one that connects to Suddles?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the street is on the left that's going, will that eventually go down also on the left side?
Right here?
Yes.
We can assume so with the existing plans and discussions.
For sake of clarity, we're not approving any roads tonight. We're approving...
Preliminary subdivision.
Preliminary subdivision plants.
That's right.
The proper lines are coming.
Exactly.
No, there are no obligation other than what's already been approved for water and sewer. There's no indication that any of these lots will be awarded sewer capacity. It has nothing to do with...
That's right.
A lot of them are recorded these plants at the courthouse as they were defined subdivision.
Well, they'll come back for that, that recordation plant.
Yeah. This plant cannot be recorded. This just authorizes it to do work.
Right. So it does authorize them to do roadway construction once they go through plan and profiles and stormwater management and all those construction level technical plans get approved.
Right. And those are under review now.
Yeah.
It's a little, it gets confusing because it's kind of reversed from what we normally see, right? Normally you'll see a subdivision come in, and then the buildings start on the individual lots. But in this instance, we approved construction for the first medical office building on a fifty some acre parcel. And now we're kind of coming back in and putting this over top of it.
Well, so Mr. Mayor answered one of my questions about allocation, so that's not on the table. That folks will be coming back for that. Tell me about these particular roadways. The maps that I have seen don't show sidewalks and don't show accommodation for bicycle. How, so what type of roadway is this relative to the master plan that says all public roadways will have those facilities? Is there an alternate arrangement that is not depicted on the plans that we should consider or be knowledgeable of?
Hello, Robbie.
Yes, okay.
Good evening, Robbie. I'm with you, it's Robin now. The, good question. The detail and construction plans will come back with part of the site plan, but to answer your question, Grant Drive will be a seventy-one foot back-to-back, will be a four-lane median divided, will include sidewalk on both sides, will include bicycle lanes on both sides, as well as Freedom Parkway, that's a forty-nine foot back-to-back, will include, it'd be a median divided, two lanes with bicycle lanes on each side as well.
Great.
As well as sidewalk on both sides.
Let me ask you about the stormwater features that are on the roadway, in the Right of Way. Do they work well with pedestrians and bicycles?
Yes, we, we actually have some projects that we've done with that before. That will be behind the back of curve, so it will not be in the travel lane, so it will be separate from the sidewalk as well. So it will basically be in your plan and strip along the roadway.
Okay. How big of a plan or wide of a?
Eight, eight feet.
Eight feet and then the sidewalk?
A lot of times you'll see, you know, we've looked at our utility strips, the plan strips are like five feet. We actually have looked at increasing that. We'd increase that from typically five feet, it would be eight feet on both road, on both roadways.
Okay. Fred, how do you feel about maintaining those?
We would have asked you on, it's a public roadway?
Chatham Park is going to maintain them. Of course, we have to agree to the language, but that's the agreement.
Okay. And will they count towards their official stormwater management, or is it just additional?
Yeah, it helps meet their ordinance obligations.
Okay.
They'll have other facilities down there, over here, but they don't have those facilities in there.
They'll contribute to their nutrient reduction, I guess.
Great.
Okay. Is this one of those clear-as-bud things that we're ready to act upon, or do we have more questions?
I've got a question.
I've got one question.
Go ahead.
It may not pertain to this at this point, but of these lots, are they possible to be split up again? These ten lots right here, are they possibly to be split again to another of this preliminary site plan?
Well, especially the two, the two larger ones.
Anything over ten acres is considered to be an exempt subdivision lot anyway. Anything over ten acres is considered to be an exempt lot. So the town would not have jurisdiction normally for those large lots. So I think Stewart's saying this is kind of played that they would be classified at this point.
Stuart, how are we doing on tracking the various measures that we've agreed to track, such as impervious surface?
It's still a work in progress.
Okay. Well, let's shore that up.
Right.
Because here it comes.
Right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the Suddles Road Subdivision, case SD dash two thousand fifteen dash zero two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Half opposed, and this subdivision application is approved. Okay, and item number five, elevated water tank recommendations of Mr. Roy.
Okay, so this is a follow-up memorandum from March ninth, considering three alternatives for an elevated water tank in the north side of town. After that presentation, the Chatham Park engineers and town staff got together on several occasions and looked at the alternatives and more...
several occasions and looked at the alternatives in more detail. And with a lot of discussion about our operations and some issues the town has been having for years related to pressure and hydraulic ray line and flow and pumps at our water treatment plant, et cetera. So the recommendation from staff is what was referred to as phase one for tonight, to essentially approve that alternative to move forward with a little more work, looking at more detail of the cost, exactly what would be improved, what elements would be included. Right now, it's, the, the two main elements are the tank itself on the Chatham Park property and a, a valve that's an automatic, an automatic facility somewhere on Chatham Park property that would monitor the tank level and move water into the tank as needed. And it would all be connected by SCADA or electrical, electrical assemblage that Adam has at the water plant to add to his system to monitor the tank and monitor the automatic valve to that tank. And that connection would eliminate the need for a booster pump, which would be, was one of our concerns at staff level with engine, with the energy costs and maintenance issues with a booster pump. So that would not be required with this proposal. And the benefit to Chatham Park is obviously they'd have good pressure on their property. And the benefit to the town, we would have better pressure in that it would continue to fill our standpipe, which is our current challenge right now. We don't have the standpipe essentially filled all the time, and so it drops. This would basically continually fill the standpipe. That would increase water quality, because we'd, we'd be moving water through the standpipe more often and out into the system. There's a few other issues that the town staff would like to see in this package that includes, it's operational, that includes our ability to better bypass our million-gallon tank to send water to the Horton tank in the south side of town when we need it. Right now, we have pressure problems on the south side as well, so that, that bypass or that, that valve, if you will, would be a great benefit to the town on the south side for moving water straight south to the Horton tank instead of going through the million-gallon tank. We believe that would be an operational advantage for the town, and it would help us have a, basically a, a healthy and holistic system throughout town, not just a nice system on the north and a not-so-nice system on the south. This would really even up the, even up our system and make Adam's job at the guys at the water tank, water treatment plant, much more user-friendly and manageable from a day-to-day basis. They have challenges with Chapel Ridge pulling water at unknown times of the day, we're working on that on the aside. So back to this phase one recommendation, the, the elevated tank at seven hundred and ten feet, the connection with the automatic transfer and the connection to the town system, SCADA, and the bypass valve would essentially be a win-win in our view. So that, that's the, that's the elements of the distribution system components. The other issues that we're recommending are kind of a revised cost opinion from their engineers on all of this. We have a preliminary one, but it is going to be revised. An operations and maintenance plan, a draft form for, you know, how do we manage this new, these new components, what staff is needed, if any, and those sort of things, so we'll know fully what we're getting ourselves into. And of course, there's the development agreement on how this is all going to work over time in terms of ownership and schedules and that sort of thing. And so we would basically want to list out all the elements in detail, so everyone's clear on what's being done, where the cost is coming from, how the maintenance is going to occur, what, what the cost over time is and how the ownership is going to be over, is it a public-private partnership, or, you know, what is the, what's the legal condition of this improvement? Chatham Park's eager to get busy on the engineering side, is my understanding. It takes, it takes about a year to fabricate the metal and do these things and do some other planning work and then the permitting work, so anything we can do to move this along for our benefit as well would be a plus. As you know, Belmont Apartments are coming, there's some single-family homes scheduled higher up the hill from Belmont Apartments, which will be more of a fire pressure question that this would eventually assist with, and it would also help the south side of town with that bypass I mentioned. So all those combined would be beneficial to Pittsburgh, in our opinion. So I guess I'll entertain any questions you might have. You have some maps, I believe, if you have questions. Phase two, I'll mention briefly, is conceptual at this point, because we don't know what the actual demand's going to be, but the idea is you build up a second tank adjacent to the first tank that's larger, presumably a million gallons, and once you have that built, then we could literally do away with our standpipe and count on those two tanks, that one main tank. So we'd have two million-gallon tanks in the north, and we'd convert to three hundred thousand gallon tanks to reclaim water at the time that we've got reclaimed water generated and where we also have a market for reclaimed water. So that, that's the, that's the conceptual plan of phase two. How we'd get there would be down a twelve-inch water main that's being built today on what's now known as Lowe's Drive Extension going up the hill, behind Lowe's. It's a twelve-inch main, so that would be in place by developers, it would be a town road. We would connect to that at the top of the hill and come down the hill, and we would have to bore under Highway sixty-four to tie into that twelve-inch that is coming from the million-gallon tank. So our cost would be doing that little extension from behind Lowe's, under, boring under sixty-four, tying into that line, and that would provide us with all the pressure we'd ever want, essentially.
Mr. Royal, you're talking about phase two?
Hey, that's a phase two concept at this point. Yeah, that's not part of the phase one. I just wanted to throw that out there, because it's a, we're thinking in the future.
Fred, on the disadvantages on that phase one?
Mm-hmm.
On the pressure-reducing valve?
Yes.
Who would be paying three hundred dollars for the valve?
That's completely up to the board. Mr. Petit told me we've done it before, and we had the residences pay for it, it was due to the line going out to Chapel Ridge, I believe, and we had to put PR, we sent notices out, and some plumbers got involved and it occurred that way. This could go either way, however the board chose. Knowing full well that phase two, if we go down this road, we have a lot more PRVs to put in, substantially more, so we'd have to decide how, how that occurs.
So Fred, help me understand the engineering.
I'll try.
We've got a tank that has an elevation of, what, six eighty? Six seventy-nine?
Six seventy-nine.
That's our standpipe.
At the top?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're filling that, and there are times of the day when it's being drawn down and no additional water is being put into it.
Temporarily.
Temporarily.
Yeah.
And then this additional three hundred thousand gallons would be in elevation higher, so the water within that tank could then, by pressure without pump, flow into the standpipe and refill it.
Correct.
From the automated valve. So from a, how do you, so the system would be filling both, the pumps from the plant would be filling both tanks?
It would actually fill the, the new tank first.
Right.
And that would breathe through SCADA, the valve would open, and the pressure from that tank would come on through.
Would fill it up.
Come to the gravity feed.
Right.
Okay. I didn't mention that phase two would include a new, two new pumps at the way at the water treatment plant. One is the main pump, it'd have to be about two hundred horsepower pushing it out, and we'd need a new backflow, we'd need a second backflow pump. Because if one, if the one we have now goes down, we can't produce water, so we need a redundant backflow pump. So I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Sure.
I have a question, sort of following what Commissioner Harrell asked with the disadvantages. How many meters would it take to get here? If the cost for meters is three hundred dollars, then I don't have to report that.
How many meters? We, we may have up to fifty for phase one, actual customers with meters.
That would go in each, it goes at each?
It goes behind the meter.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah. It, it literally gets installed right behind the meter.
Okay, gotcha.
Which is, it's fine, I, I didn't understand this either, I had to look into it, but that's how it works. The other question that was asked was are they all on private property or private property? I didn't have a direct immediate answer for that. It probably, well, it will depend on where the meter is. Presumably the meter's on the property line, so the PRV would be on the private property, would be my, my best guess.
Well, it's something, I mean, I got a bunch of other questions or just observations like that. My first observation is, I'm, I'm not sure what you're asking us for here tonight.
Sorry.
There's a bunch of detail in here about the home options. I know what you're, I know what you're not, but you're not asking us for money. You're not asking us to hire an engineer to design this. So it feels to me like you're just asking for concurrence in a conceptual plan that's got very little meat on the bones right now, so this is just like a first step, and are you just asking us to let you take the next step? Is that what the question is?
That's correct. It's to approve of phase one conceptually, so that Chatham Park can get busy with the design, the O and M, the cost opinions, all the details hammered out, and that the town can get busy with the development agreement, this draft, to make all this happen. That's kind of the, the basics of the recommendation.
So you are asking us to authorize Chatham Park to retain engineers to do detailed construction design and that sort of thing?
Um.
Sounds like.
It's, it's, yeah, it's to give approval of Chatham Park, that, yeah, this is a, this is the direction we want to go in.
So are we, then we're relinquishing control of that design process to the developer except you're?
We would have them design it and then we would review it. And we, I would bring the design to you for review, along, along with the cost opinions and all these other elements.
I mean, you had produced several options a month, a couple of months ago, and my recollection is this was the preferred option from my perspective. I think it hit on many more of the town's needs, so I think it's just a, an idea that says, okay, let's go in this direction. Chatham Park is going to design, build a bunch of infrastructure that's going to be serving this particular option, and I, and I think it makes sense. I mean, I know from working with several folks in town that, yeah, water pressure is, is an issue. I think this is going to go a good long way towards helping that and be more reliable, so I think it makes sense.
It's going to serve a lot more the Chatham Park than the, than we know that.
Well, I can't tell whether it makes sense or not, because it deals strictly with water, doesn't address it all, you know, it's fine to have three hundred thousand gallons of capacity to fill over water, but it doesn't mention where the wastewater's gone, so it feels like an incomplete plan to me. Doesn't address how it dovetails with our ongoing study of possible expansion of our wastewater treatment plan. I don't think you can separate those two. Kind of begs the question, where's the, where's the utilities' master plan, and how does it not do that? So I kind of get what you're, I kind of get what you're asking for, conceptual approval of the, of the tank option. I think there's a lot of questions about, well, okay, so now we have water up there, still can't build anything because we can't give people wastewater capacity, so what's the, is this the first best use of our engineering efforts and our money? Is this, is this what we should be doing first, or should we be concurrently, or should we be first sorting out the wastewater, or should we concurrently be doing both? I mean, I don't, there's enough meat on the bones here for me to understand precisely where we're going.
I think we are actually concurrently doing both. We've adjusted that opinion and measured where we have the PER that's currently in process, and I think, I think a lot of our initial issues as far as expansion of our existing facility or adding to our existing facilities or using, using other options can be partially addressed through that. I think tonight what we're looking for is, is a lot of check-in. As Mr. Royal mentioned, we've had some work to this point in developing some concepts. We've whittled down that, that first phase of the concept, and what we're asking you guys to do tonight is to sort of review and react to that and let us know if we're on the right track. As, as, as Mr. Royal mentioned, all of this would be contingent on civil and town staff approval of capital operations cost, developing, a development, developing and approving and agreeing to developing, and also identifying and making improvements to SCADA, all of which have to be done yet before, before Chatham Park or anyone could really enjoy the fruits of this labor. So, I mean, I guess in a nutshell, to answer your question, yeah, it would be concurrent with the PER and the work that's associated with that. You really can't have a chicken without an egg, and this is kind of, this is kind of the egg as far as the water piece is concerned. And as was mentioned earlier, there's quite a bit of pressure benefits that we gain throughout the system that I think we've been experiencing roots on the ground to this point as well. So it is a tricky issue, I think, to get our heads around, but I think we've, the work that's been put into it has been a really good starting point. That said, we've got more work to do.
Well, yeah, our pressure issues that end in town are longstanding shortfall. Belmont Ridge has got issues, so I get that, and we might have needed to do something like this without Chatham Park, so I understand. I'm just struggling with, number one, what is it that you're asking of us tonight? Number two, how does it dovetail with the grant plan? And where's the wastewater going?
I guess I would just sum up, as we're, we're looking for approval to keep moving forward in this direction, to come back with more details. If it's not the right direction, you know, we could stop and reassess, something like that.
Of the options that I think you presented months ago, I will restate that this was my preference, and it seemed to be the one that made the most engineering sense. Met many more competing needs for the system and was flexible, and I think was, had a better phasing concept to it. Transitioning the, the three hundred thousand gallon tank after it's done using, being used for pressure and being used for recirculating water, I think's a great idea. And I don't think the other concepts had that effect to it, so, you know, that's one way that some of the sewer component is addressed, that if that tank is actually distributing reclaimed water instead of discharging it to the stream, that's one way that it helps the sewer component. So, yeah, I think it hits on the, it seems like the right direction from, from my perspective.
I'll just add that it also, the first, the first phase one- I'll just add that it also, the first, the first Phase One had a booster pump and we had concerns about the energy costs and the maintenance costs, so that's no longer there. And it didn't include the other, Chatham Park was not aware of our operational challenges throughout town until we got to this point. So, we believe this, that that is now being addressed that wasn't addressed before. So it's kind of a, that's, that's why I keep saying win-win. It, it kind of helps the whole town system. And of course, the, the development agreement will have to spell out all the language of the ownership and maintenance and all that funding and all that stuff. So, that's to be done in the future. It, it may be that on the sewer question, we, we, depending on what Mr. Gruzbeck's pleasure is, we present to you where we're at. We're, we're at the 50% stage, but maybe in the next meeting or something, we could, I don't know.
Yeah, that's the, that's the schedule.
Okay.
The check-in, the milestone, maybe 80% milestone with PER, which would happen at the next meeting.
Can you put this map up on the...
Which, which one side of the page?
Phase one. Yeah, see that? That looks like the two mile run of pipe from that pump station up there down to the, the tank.
Right, the automated control valve, the 12 inch down to 16511.
Okay. So that fills the tank. And how does, how does the water get to the existing 10 gallon tank?
From here, goes on our existing line this way. That valve will open and pressure will come this way.
So you're pumping it uphill for the tank? Then the pumps are off, it's gravity beaten back down?
Mm-hmm.
It's going back down the hill and back down 15511 for the tanks?
Right. There's a point in the system when you, you're not sure if the pressure's coming from the pumps or the head, and there's a real, you know, dynamic there. But that's where that valve will figure it out for us.
Well, what's the will of the board? I'm not, I'm still not sure what we're being asked to do tonight. I feel like I'm being asked a solid puzzle of two pieces of the hundred puzzle set here. If all you're asking for is approval of a conceptual, conceptual idea that this is a good place for a tank, I guess I'm comfortable with that as long as you're not asking the town to spend any money on it very high, asking for authorization to construct or anything like that. Maybe just sort of progress report. I guess I'm comfortable saying I, I could accept your recommendation of the location of that tank. I would like to have a lot more puzzle thesis before we commit anybody's, even if the town's not the owner of the development.
Perhaps if I clarify what would be next?
Yes.
You know, I'm standing up here, the next time, it, it would, we, we would have cost opinions on all of this. You could see the cost. You could see a draft operations and maintenance plan. You could see a draft development agreement. And you could see the list of everything that's going to be built and essentially a recommendation of how it all gets paid for. And that would be no engineering plans either, but it would just be the next step.
What do you think that timeframe is?
July, July. Rest of the development group, so probably July.
I would, I would say probably the August, we'd have one meeting in July. We're probably looking at the August meeting. Which I think is, is probably an appropriate time to check in on that anyway because the PER would, would be ready for, it would already be by the border at that time. So I think we would have a matchup.
The sewer PER?
I'm sorry, wastewater treatment.
What's the will of the board? What guidance you want to give us now?
I'll say head in this direction.
Move forward. Think that affirmation by consensus or does somebody want to make a motion about that?
I'll make the motion that we move forward in this direction.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guess you got what you were...
Good question. We'll be back.
And a new business, item number one, which is a request for withdrawal of a dedication of easement on Belmont Ridge. Mr. Gruzbeck, I'll read this and Mr. Bass.
I can, I can get it started and then Mr. Bass can probably, whatever details I haughtily leave out. Back in 2007, the town and Bowler Realty had a piece of property that was, was, actually we're, we're discussing a piece of property where it was contemplated to extend the right-of-way along, let's see the ma, uh, doesn't, the colors don't come up very well, the Belmont Ridge Road at the very top of Chatham Forest Development. I was contemplating to extend this, I guess that would be further to the west. And the Bowler Realty had agreed to allow for a portion of their property to be dedicated to allow that extension. And it was agreed that when it was, when the time had come, the, the town would, would also do the same, the ends of providing this parcel right here with, with road access. In the time since then, we were advised that the, that the dedication or that, that road, there's some interest apparently in constructing that road. So, as you can see in the attached, we've, we've attached a letter from Bowler Realty to request that they withdraw, that we had consented, that the town consents to agree to withdraw, their withdrawal of that, of that dedication of property. And, which I believe, if I'm not mistaken, is something that, that again, the town agreed to with Bowler Realty back in 2007, that the dedication take place. Again, ultimately, the, the road is not going to be constructed. If I'm not mistaken, this withdrawal could probably, you know, later would be made. But I think it has some sort of, left a good faith, the request was that the town somehow agree and consent and that the plan changes would be made subsequent to this.
I, I would just say that Mr. Chad Rigsby, who's the local attorney, is representing the purchasers of this piece of property. And if you all have any questions about what the purchasers intend to use it for, he's available for that. But the point of this is to go away with the option of dedication of that 30 foot strip along the north side of that line.
Yeah, I would want to do it for Mr. Rigsby because what I noted that, you know, the, the town has no use for it, we have no use for it, but it curiously, it creates a landlocked piece of property when you do this. The only way to get to it is to trespass across other people's properties. And I would be interested to hear.
Well, from what I've been advised, actually, consulting with Mr. Bass over the last, today and with the last few weeks, Belmont Ridge Road, public right-of-way actually does, but the, the property, if you were to recombine that dedicated portion with the, with the parcel being sold. Now, there is an unimproved area of Belmont Ridge Road that's from, according to Charles Lyson, the survey we're working with, it's about a 17 foot gap of unimproved plant in the public right-of-way from Belmont Ridge Road out of the property boundary. But, in speaking with, with Mr. Bass, I was hoping my, my clients could, could gravel that and use it basically as a, to tack the right-of-way to enter the property for the time being. And then later on, if they have any, any plans to further subdivide it, they would do so, you know, in accordance with the town ordinances. The time should ever come.
Okay, I think I see what you're saying now. If we, we give you back this piece here, then the, the southern property line around the water tank is the same as the northern line of your property as an acre?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then you would have a small piece of access to Belmont Ridge Road there and then at the top of the property.
That's correct.
And, you know, I don't know, we could object to this if the town has, has any use for it. Has it given...
It's, it's, no, we talked about like Belmont having multiple exits and then that's an issue, that whole area without that, the way out there. Now, the thing is that they can make them work.
Right. Well, they got the, they got the Springdale exit, which is recently added.
I've noticed that if the town develops, there might be jobs at that time. It's like, I want our communities to be, certainly connected to the, to the facility.
It's hard to see on this map, but the gravel road that goes up to the water tank doesn't really continue over Belmont.
No, sir, it does not, so...
Yeah, I recognize that it doesn't connect anything now. I'm just saying if the future, if development happens beyond that, that... The future, that there's nothing in the future.
Well, that could be worked out and, you know, if site plans come in to root this property.
Could also be worked out with an easement to the, to the town eventually.
I think that makes a lot of sense to have two, for the town to have two points of access to the water tower. You know, and, and when I'm looking at the roadway, it's, it, I don't know if it's accurate. It's GIS data. I don't know if it's built not in the center of the right-of-way as that would portray. So, for the town to get access to its property, it would probably require some encroachment onto this strip. And it would make a lot of sense, from my perspective, for the town to reserve some ability to gain access from that stub of Belmont Ridge Road to the, the water tank. So, you know, if we have an arrangement that would preserve some level of access and construction even for a town driveway to gain access, that would, that would make sense to me.
We're hoping that right there, Belmont Ridge.
It appears to, I'm dead end, I'm, the best that I can find, that there, the plans for it never really, uh, have any, anything.
May I address, since we created this situation?
Please.
Back in '07, we were thinking of extending the road and maybe having, working with the town for a park on that site. That's why that was dedicating. And at one time, I think we were talking about putting the road up here that we chose to where Mr. Spoon had that access, none of which ever came before, should we do that? He actually has access down near 15511. And on the other side of Belmont Ridge, it ties into Belmont Station. So that is a fourth point of access. I think Mr. Bass could speak to the easement on Water Tank Road, Paul. I'm not sure that's a public, I mean, I've talked to you before about this, but you could not burden that with public right-of-way, correct?
That is just a private easement.
So there will be another connection to Belmont?
Correct. On the other side of Belmont, it connects to Belmont Ridge and the plans that Mr. Spoon had put forth have a connection to come out of Lowe's.
Yeah, that's mainly why I'm interested, just making sure that we can connect. But if the other way, does it make sense? You're not talking about distribution.
No. Our intent was if we could, if we, we had to have 20, it's 25 feet on either side. That's what I always saw, maybe, you know, who knows, Mike, if GIS is correct. But we were asking for 25 feet on the town side to line that property line up if we were going to go forward. Well, we never did. At one time, someone wanted to come to the town and build a facility, remember there, but the Chatham Forest residents didn't want that yoga facility, so that kind of went to the wayside. So, these nice folks just want to build a house. They want you to deed it to them with access. What I conveyed to you via emails was, I think the smart thing is that we would convey it with the ability that the town would have an easement on it if you ever needed to use it. So that they can put a driveway in, if they build a house, they can live there or whatever they intend to do. But then it would give you the right at some point later that you could come back if you needed the public access. And we could give, in the deed, the same easement for utilities. And I think that would solve it. At this point, that's all we're really asking. To preserve the public interest and allow us to convey the property to these folks so that they can actually enjoy it.
How do you all feel about granting the town an easement for access in utilities? I don't think we would...
As long as they have access to it.
Yeah, I don't even think it needs to be that full width or length.
Every corner, maybe not yet.
Probably get Mr. Bass and Mr. Royal to put their heads together and think about what would be best as far as a minimal need from the town's perspective.
So the request before us is to approve the request from Bowler Realty that would draw the dedication of easement at 99. I'd like to do that tonight. What action would you want to do that motion?
That motion. We can fix everything up.
And then with respect to the, replacing that with a, a utility easement, as we said, we'll work that out with the owners. Uh, first I've heard about it is tonight, but we can't.
I want to make a motion to approve the request for withdrawal of dedication of Belmont Ridge Road easement with the condition that access, construction, and utility easements be reserved in that area to the satisfaction of the town.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If you oppose, then the request is approved as qualified by the consent. Okay, next item is, we, I asked for this item from the consent agenda. It's a, a proposed annexation, uh, 2015 to Chatham Park investors. And the reason I asked to pull it is I, I don't think there's enough information here for us to, for either the board to make a decision after a public hearing or for citizens to be informed adequately about, to have, to make informed decision, asking intelligent questions about the annexation. And the reason I say that is because an annexation decision is basically a business And the reason I say that is because an annexation decision is basically a business decision, you know, it's about cost and benefits. How is this annexation going to affect revenues in terms of taxes? How's it going to affect revenues in terms of water sewer fees? By putting this property in the town, it cuts the water sewer fees in half, how's that, you know, affect the equation? How's it, does it affect all of the operational departments? In terms of fire, if we annex this area, our responsibility is to support it. Here, if the department goes up, the county's goes down. What's the cost associated with that? We have an additional cost for police protection in the area. We have additional cost around trash pickup in the area. And without an economic analysis of whether this is a net gain for the town or a net loss for the town, I don't know how we could make an informed decision about whether to annex it or not annex it. So, my recommendation would be to table it and give the staff time to produce a cost-benefit analysis that will accomplish that. And I think the time is right to do this. We're going to be faced with dozens, if not hundreds, of these over the next ten, twenty, thirty years. And the correct way to do these is to, is to consider the costs and whether it's going to cost the taxpayers money, or it's a revenue neutral, or it's a revenue gainer. So, that's, that's what we're on the agenda. I think we should table it. I'd like you the staff opportunity to give us a report on the potential costs and potential benefits of taking this action. I'm fine with authorizing the court to determine sufficiency of the application. Not so fine with scheduling a public hearing on May 26th.
Mr. Mayor, I may be wrong about this, but I, I thought with Labor, Chadon Park was in law on voluntary annexation. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Phil, Cole, Reverend. We are required, either prior to, or contemporaneously with, the applications of subdivisions and site plans to submit an application for annexation. It's up to you whether you accept that. I think there are cases where you might want to accept the annexation, there might be cases where you don't. It is our responsibility to submit to you that application. So, and this is a complete application. According to the town's published procedure, we actually look to see whether there are any additional procedures, and there are not any procedures. So, we believe it's sufficient, understanding your point, Mayor, that this is something that we know that we need to have, and we had discussed this previously about these financial impacts.
Yeah, I'm certainly not questioning the developer's application, I'm just saying that this is, the town's entering a new era here of complexity in terms of annexations that we haven't, haven't probably experienced before, and we need to grow with that. And you, I think the finance officer, she's with us tonight, or...
She's with us.
But between Mr. Grusbeck and the finance officer, it would be fairly easy to reach out to other municipalities that do this, do annexations that have more coverage of way with respect to cost and benefits. And there's probably a fairly simple computer model out there with a spreadsheet that could help you balance out how revenues are affected, how expenses are affected, and come to a decision as to whether it's going to cost the taxpayers money, or that it's break-even, or that it's actually...
And Mayor, we, this is the subject that the manager and myself spoke with about a week ago, and we're here to help out and assist in it. If this, if this annexance, incurring, the town of Pittsburgh is to be paid by Chadon Park, that's in the master plan, correct? All right?
That's three hundred thousand, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but if, if there's, if the additional taxes that we collect don't cover, no, Archie comes to us next year, once or next year, probably in the next few weeks, well, it's another pump in, in the amount of what the cost base for fire coverage, it says the acreage, and the, the tan ex gets larger, I'm going to pay more for that. Sooner or later, the chief's going to come to us and say, you know what, this, I got, I mean, another two officers in the car, because the town's getting bigger, and it'll be two more, two more, two more. And as we do these things incrementally, we need to, we need to analyze, each one is a, we do, I think what the people, what's called monetize the expenses. Sign of share of fire, sign of share of police, sign of share of public work, road maintenance, trash collection, all the administrative duties the towns do, what's that going to cost? You know, not just for this one, but for every, every one door forward. In order for the board to make informed decisions, I don't think that information's necessary. I don't think it's a big deal. I think the first one might be a little hard to, be something new for the staff to do and be comparative of it, but we're more trusting to make a, a smart decision about whether it should be annexed now or later after development's, or other longer.
It's different.
Yeah, there's, the tax that we collect on an unimproved lot is a lot different than a lot, a lot that's got a medical office building. Should we actually now, or should we wait until the building's there? These are the kind of questions that a cost-benefit analysis will give.
Thank you, Mr. Messick, have a sound, please.
The motion is just for a public hearing to be set, it's not for a determination to be made by you all. Secondly, you just approved this land to be a part of the primary plant. You have authorized work to be done on a primary plant for all of this twenty-nine acres, including land that's already in the town limits. You're not going to know until site plans come in what the costs are in terms of revenues, or what the cost might be in terms of expenses. One of the, the hospice site is included in this twenty-nine acres. Are you going to allow a hospice building to be constructed and not be in the town limits? I mean, that, those are the issues, and you can't do a real cost-benefit, so you know what buildings are going to be there, what uses are going to be there. And you're not going to know that now. Ever. I mean, unless you let them build these things, and then somehow or other trigger some kind of annexation request after it's already built. And I'm not sure that's going to be for the town.
Well, I would disagree with that. I'd say you, I would agree that you cannot do a cost accounting, because that's why you call it a cost estimate, because you don't know what building you're going to be there. You have to, the people that do these things base it on, you know, averages, whether it's residential or commercial, averages of certain types of zoning and whatnot. You know, there are ways to do these analyses, and that's why they call them estimates, a lot of countings.
If you can go somewhere through a site plan, and if they should have...
Well, I think the, the language is such that it says, upon application of a subdivision or a site plan. So, it's probably more difficult when it's a subdivision, because you don't know exactly what the use is on any particular lot. Whereas a site plan, you know precisely what's being proposed, and can do a better cost analysis. As far as subdivision goes, you probably have the, the knowledge of whether it's commercial or residential. Commercial's typically going to generate more revenue and cover taxes more than, than residential. So, in that regard, I think a financial analysis is reasonable. I think it's, it's done all along across North Carolina, on annexation.
To the extent that any of this is not in town, you cannot have a public street outside of town. So, this subdivision plan has to place public streets, so you're going to have DOT streets in an area adjacent to the town limits. Is that what you want?
I want to know what it's going to cost. Makes economic sense to annex it or not.
And that might indicate who's going to maintain the roadway, though, is what I hear with Mr. Messick is saying, is that...
I can't imagine you would not maintain the roadway.
I think there's going to be plenty of roadways in Chadon Park that are not maintained by the town. And I expect that NCDOT would be involved in several of the larger boulevard-style roads, is what I expect.
Yeah, you know, I think, I think it's pretty simple. We have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Pittsburgh to understand when we're undertaking, when we're undertaking, and settling them with more costs and potentially higher taxes and higher water and sewer rates. And all I'm asking is for an analysis to tell us that.
The development agreement that is to be determined in the future will cover the anticipated public service demands that the development is going to cause and deal with who's going to pay for it. That is to be determined in the future. It is not going to be something that you're going to be able to tell, looking at twenty-nine acres on a map, that if that's what you want to do, you're going to come up with some kind of numbers. But you can't tell how much tax is going to be, do you know what's built there? I mean, it, it requires no services now, there's a twenty-nine acre vacant piece of land. There's no police, no fire, no garbage, so there's no cost to the town.
Maybe snow rule.
Well, you start in the power place, then you can go from there.
Fire protection, any protection, some of it will always...
It's just for a public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for May 26, 2015.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Move up.
It's like you do for things like that.
Well, that's, that's true, but I think the citizens deserve to see those cost figures as well before the public hearing, so that they have comments, and they can, and they can make those comments. And I think we're getting it out there. All in favor?
I already said that.
We already did that, okay. Have we taken action on the authorization for the court to determine sufficiency of the application, or air motion to do that?
Second?
There's two pieces in the recommendation. Can you hear a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Looks under right, attorney's permission, CDI. Manager's update on capital projects.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, many of the things that I would typically update on, I think, were action items on tonight's agenda, particularly as far as the East Street sidewalk project, and, for example, Vernon Park, Paige Vernon Park, that was obviously moving forward. The other thing that was also mentioned earlier this evening was the, was the, at the next meeting, we will look forward to the eighty percent milestone report from the Luton Company on the wastewater treatment plant PR. There was, I believe, last week in a meeting on the fifty percent milestone and checking in on the work that's been done to that, and that's, I'm pleased to say, is moving on very nicely and collecting some really useful information, I think, for the, for the board to use in those future important capital decisions. The, another item that I would update on was, would be with regards to the question that was raised at the last meeting, I think Commissioner, Commissioner Foley had requested we look into the possibility of improving landscaping at the traffic cycle at eighty-seven over by the library at the county complex, and I followed up on that, and the contact there said I was very agreeable, and was, was just kind of open-ended toward it. If we have an idea of what we want to design and put in there, they're certainly willing to look at that. And I think they, I mean, famous last words, they sound pretty flexible on it. I think the big concern is that they not, that we not put anything up that might, that might block the view, provide a vision answer, but other than that, yeah, so we can, we can circle back on the no fund type of thing. The, I have a couple more things. I will say, though, that before, before my portion, there's some other things that I want to talk about a little later tonight, but it's my, I guess my bittersweet news to pass along, that Stuart Bass, who is the town's planning director, will be leaving us to move closer to his hometown to serve the council of governments around that side of the state. And so, I think, I think that it's definitely, as I said, a moment for us, because as you guys are aware, Mr. Bass brought a lot of experience to the job, and he certainly helped me out in some of my early days here, and had a real good bedside manner with folks and his experience, and I'm sure if you are aware of his dry sense of humor, that's going to be missed, and hard to put a price tag on that sort of thing as well. So, his last day will be June 5th, and they're still planning, I'm not going to send them off, but, but that is, that is my, again, good for him, I think. It's going to be a challenge for us. The, the process on, on staffing in the face of some of the Chadon Park work and other development continues forward, we will be expecting to have resumes collected by the end of the month for the customer service position that will serve the engineering and planning departments. And at the engineering tech position, we expect to have, actually, we'll have up tomorrow, and then we would expect to have those in, resumes collected by, I think, the first week of June is what we're shooting for, to have planning in terms of filling a hole left by planning immediately. What I anticipate doing is, is a similar playbook, I think, that Mr. Terry used last time around, and that's to secure the services of a third-party consultant to help with the day-to-day stuff, at least to get us over, and then we'll be immediately advertising that position as well. You know, again, I think with some of this, I've, I've started working through, typically, I would just kind of slap down dates on a timeline, and what I've kind of tried to do is, is go through and I'll, I'll give you a better idea of how we're phasing in the planner position. But my challenge with this is to try to figure out, because of the space limitations that we have, when we would be factoring in all of these steps and milestones, and when we would be looking at a start date. So, I will keep you updated on that. Planner thing obviously came up just recently, so I've had to revise some timelines around that. So, definitely, definitely a challenge. Again, I think that in the case of all the other positions that we've had to fill, since I've, I've been here, I think we've come out on top in every single one of them without fail, and I think we can, we can forge ahead on this one as well, as much as we miss the people and the folks that have moved on to other phases of the project. So, with that, I will, will back off, and hope that I've heard any questions, Mr. Mayor.
We all have a letter in front of us here from the mayor of, mayors of Chapelville and Carbo, and the Chapelville Transit line is in jeopardy. And since it's a budget issue, I think maybe we should take a minute to give a little vision guide, so as to like, y'all, everybody had a chance to read this? To give you the, the long and short of the Chapelville and Carbo, are they longer going to subsidize this route? Basically, they're telling us that it's, it's, the agreement that can be drawn expires on June 30th, unless it's the Chatham County of the town, and come to some agreement to cover the full cost of the route, which appears to be about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The town's been contributing, I think, in the first year, we had twenty-four thousand, then we went to eighteen, then we went to twelve. So, even if we were to go back to the twenty-four, we'd be asking the county to put in a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars or so. So, I guess, as a board, we need to advise Mr. Grusbeck, do we want to, do we want to huddle the county and try and save this route, or let it die, or does that go up in answer, or what's our, what's our guidance to the manager?
Is UNC of the same opinion? They're contributing fifty-two thousand.
I think they said they had a partners advisory board meeting, so that would be UNC. Chapelville Transit... So that would be UNC, Chapelville Transit Partners Advisory. That includes all of the contributing funders, Chapelville, Orange County, University of North Carolina, and Carver. So that board can take a vote for what the board has decided.
If I could, just from my perspective, I haven't seen everything that's in that letter, so I don't know everything was discussed. I have had some conversation with the director and so I know kind of the basics of what they laid out. And where we stand right now in the budget, the draft budget that you have this evening, we did plug in $12,000 as we had last year. So that's our contribution. If you were to approve our budget in the form that's in right now, it would be $12,000 without any sort of modifications. So that's obviously fluid.
So I guess really the bottom line is, I don't think there's any expectation here that the county is going to save this if the county is not going to give a game, so.
I think we'll have to just ask the county and just run it by them, see what they say.
Was that addressed to Chapel County?
Yes.
Yeah. Commissioner Crawford got it as well, so I don't know whether.
Right. Still touch base with the people, maybe.
It's work trying to keep this going, especially as we're about to grow so much that it seems like this is when we do need to be looking at public transportation even more so than in past years, so it's some laying the groundwork for what's coming in the future. So I'd like to see, you know, under discussion with the county, people keep it moving forward.
I agree.
Yeah.
So to do that, you want Mr. Bruce Beck to talk to you more than you already have? And you want me to go talk to Jim Crawford or do one of the other? I'll get in touch with the chair, Mr. Crawford, and Mr. Bruce Beck will reach out to Mr. Moore then to get, see where we are. If the county has determined that they're interested in that, it's going to be hard for us to carry this one. Okay. So that, you want to do Commissioner Concerns before we go into close session? So I guess I, okay. And there's like the EDC, the only thing I have before is a meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM with the DC boards and do a little after that meeting. And the RPO, I don't have any solid base, [inaudible], downtown business association. Commissioner Concerns?
Yes. I have a [inaudible].
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Early on, Ms. Mann had signed in and she was delayed at a training over at Mitchell's Chapel Church. She's come and waited. She only has about a minute and a half, something that's timely, that she wanted to provide to the board.
Want to hear this, man?
Thank you, sir.
Please.
I followed the way I signed her in.
Send your name and address for the review.
My name is Casey Mann. I live at 185 Turmer Loop Road in the town of Pittsboro. I feel very short behind this.
You want to lie down? Maybe you're smart.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for your patience and your indulgence. Good evening, Mayor Terry, Mayor Pro Tem Baldwin, and the Town Board of Pittsboro. I come before you today to request that the town of Pittsboro implement an ordinance that would allow golf carts to be driven in and around the town under reasonable circumstances. You may wonder if this is allowed. And according to North Carolina general statute 160A-300.6, it authorizes a municipality by ordinance to regulate the operation of a golf cart on any public street, road, or highway where the speed limit is 35 miles or less within its municipal limits or on property owned or controlled by the city. I actually have brought a model ordinance for your review. I requested it from former Mayor Waller, who I believe obtained it from the talented and wise Paul Messick. In any case, I am interested in this legislation because of my own personal circumstances. I nearly died about 20 years ago in an automobile accident. I was brought back to life and put back together thanks to the marvels of modern surgery and an awful lot of metal. I cannot walk great distances on concrete and I live right in town behind the Pagley Wiggly and I would really like to not have to drive my gas car in order to pick up groceries and just to run into town in order to see downtown shops. This ordinance would allow me to not have to expend the same carbon footprint if we're able to walk the same distances. I have a draft copy for your review and I respectfully request that you hold a public hearing on the topic and implement the ordinance. I appreciate your time and your patience once again, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
If you can, if you can handle that, you can, or if you can just [inaudible].
They have to stay [inaudible].
In the ordinance package, you should [inaudible].
I see lawnmowers driving up in Nellie Street, all the time in tractors, so.
Remember Allen used to drive his daddy up and up?
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of a [inaudible].
You want to ask the manager to bring this back to the future consideration?
Makes a lot of sense.
I think we should bring it back after he talks with the police.
How about after he gets the budget done in August?
Yeah, August, yeah. When we get the budget done before August, we'll have [inaudible]. I don't see anything in here about Stonebills, so.
[inaudible].
Mr. Burrow?
Now, having made Mr. Bruce Beck [inaudible] several developments, one that where we're standing on our consultants and, you know, our planners that we're planning on hiring, so he will have that.
I did an issue, [inaudible] my father recently moved into Kansas City, Pittsboro, and there
I'm meeting a lot of people at a relative age. And I was speaking with Mrs. Wester, who is the mother of Sheriff Wester. She's there because she was in very good health. She was crying, she was coming down early, was coming down the steps, had hit the [inaudible] fell and broke her hip. So now she's retired to live in assisted living. She told me that several people approached her and said they've also been injured in the same [inaudible]. So it's a place of heart and a piece of mind, just living independently. And in spite of that, she's now living in a different facility. So not just her, but apparently a lot of people have had. I think it's just the luck of being in those areas, there's [inaudible] [inaudible]. And my father [inaudible] too. It's really hazardous for people that are elderly or handicaps and, I don't know, this looks like something that we need to look at to make sure that in face of people going up and down those steps and make sure it's [inaudible] at the bottom when they come up. And apparently she fell because not coming down the steps, not the bottom, there's [inaudible].
She fell over the curb where it went down to the bottom step before the tree curve is, that angle how it comes down, she twisted on that.
[inaudible].
Same [inaudible].
Well, I agree, I mean, I do.
Well, we did have an [inaudible] we installed it.
I don't think we need to add [inaudible] or something, but it's like [inaudible] a lot of people. We still [inaudible].
[inaudible].
I know we talked about that [inaudible].
[inaudible].
I just think [inaudible]. That's an issue that we need to consider, that there's an impact on people's lives. You know, it's [inaudible].
Just to touch on that about the handicap, the handicap parking is, that is a horrible place. There's no sign, there says handicap parking. And then, oh, yeah, and then if the handicap were to park in that space and they were to get out, they would be hit. So the space that's right beside the handicap parking, parking, needs probably be designated. And a second, you know, just the yellow [inaudible] where no one can park there because, again, if somebody parked there in handicap, in handicap, they get out in wheelchair, it's no way that they can do it there. Yeah, someone would certainly hit them. So I think that's something we need to look at downtown, out of downtown, not too long ago, looking at that.
Yeah, it's, as has been mentioned, it was identified as a key component in our downtown visioning. You know, it's, obviously, there's quite a cost that goes along with that to be comprehensively. And I think the goal initially with the downtown, the product of the downtown visioning at work, like the safety stuff and the streetscape improvements that we'd see downtown were safety-related. But the goal, the overall goal was to allow the state to really follow through on their commitment to our downtown as part of the vision process. So that's one strategy, to see if they could possibly move that up. The other would be to simply see how much of that, you know, we, from the town's perspective, want to take on, if there are any fits there. Essentially, any grants that we would get would be through DOT, being a DOT road, I think there's some eligibility for that. I've not tried for a safety enhancement or any sort of safety improvement grant since I've been here, but that's a route we could take. I think probably would be the route we would take to the visioning process anyway. So I guess to answer your question, yeah, we could see if there's any way to expedite some of those issues to move that forward.
Not the most logical, [inaudible].
Yeah, it's, I mean, I'm reluctant, I'm reluctant to do, it's almost like a whack of all, where if you make an improvement in one area, you're still held liable in other areas. And sometimes you have to be careful when you take away one liability, like, you knowingly realize that other accidents may have occurred, kind of open to [inaudible] those accidents that may have occurred. So there is some liability sometimes, no big D goes unpunished, there is some liability sometimes in making safety improvements on your sidewalks, unfortunately, and it's applicable, that's the ugly reality of it. But, yeah, I kind of hope to do the overall streetscape improvement closer, whenever it was that I was going to retire, because it's going to be a pretty involved project. But, yeah, we can see what we can expedite on it, for sure.
Well, we'll put my two cents in here. Having lived through a seven or eight-year streetscape project in Chapelville and watching it get designed and built out, it's very, very expensive and, you know, to do it in a comprehensive manner, the first step is that our competent, our [inaudible] engineering for ours is going to be even more challenging. Chapelville downtown is flat, and so the challenge there is, you know, they put utilities under the sidewalk, we have to employ engineering challenges, but I think ours is going to be even more so because of the elevation is different on the east side than the west side, and then the elevation changes north and south. So that's going to take some real creativity from engineering and architecture point of view. I've walked that street under times in the last eight years. I had a solution I offered a long time ago, but to do it in a comprehensive manner is going to take time and money. If we wanted to dedicate that, we talked about it some work [inaudible].
And, you know, talking about Chapelville's plan, they do actually have some conditions that emulate our high side, if you will, at Burley's Safe Runway Step Down. I think East Franklin and about intersection with Columbia, it's got the steps and it's got handrails, yeah. So there are, I know on the low side, I'm not familiar with a town that has that issue.
Oh, that's, that's tough.
Yeah.
I wouldn't suggest in a total comprehensive there for the handicap. What I would suggest, though, would be if DOT would at least put up a handicap sign so that people can, it will be directly in front instead of on the street.
Yeah. The signage is probably pretty easy to take care of, but that's the first.
That's one thing to start with. Because really, again, if you're handicapped in a wheelchair, you cannot get out safely and try to do anything down there. And, you know, there is several law that requires disability people with disabilities to have access, yes.
No, I think the space you're specifically referring to is the one.
Southeast.
Close at Beggars and Choosers.
Yeah.
And it's got, it's got the ramp. Well, the handicap space is actually, would block the ramp. You couldn't get access to it. And typical handicap space has the space plus the thing called an access aisle, which is the striped-off area. And I think when DOT did the paving and restriped, they, I don't know if we ever had that access aisle there, but it's definitely not there now. And if somebody were to park there, they'd have to get out of their car in their wheelchair and go around the car into traffic, ultimately never to get back to the ramp because their car would be blocking it, so it really needs to be open.
Yeah, maybe that will, we can do the whack [inaudible].
Definitely would be just adding some extra rails. If their person were to park.
You have other thoughts on that?
My concern dovetails with that. I think we've got Rob Stone coming to give us an update on where the DOT stands with the circle improvements. Mr. Bruce Beck, do you have a date? Do we know that?
There are dates going around, as of today, and they're looking at, there were a few dates I saw identified in early June, but no, they haven't settled on a date.
Okay. Okay. I'll be interested to attend, so I'd like to know.
Action, I'll review.
Good.
Thank you.
A few quick things. Thank you for the stop sign replacements. All the neighbors said thank you. Other things for following up on the dump trucks that were going down Park, it seems to have been [inaudible].
It's Kevin Duffin on, so let us know.
Okay, all right. And the last thing, Mr. Horn, is he up here? The, we're frequent users of the little bike pump downtown where the [inaudible] things are, and the little air thing had fallen off the last time we were trying to use it. So just if Mr. Horn has a second, a second to check on.
Sure.
I know that, I know a few people that [inaudible]. So I guess, thank you.
Next door to business is a closed session. Do you want to take a break? [inaudible].
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Ten-minute break before we go into a session.
This year?
[inaudible].
Was [inaudible].
Giving me migraines, too.
Now they gotta make the motion first.
Make a motion, we go back into session.
Okay.
Second, make the second?
Oh, second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, so we're back in session. Understate a motion to go to closed session, if you want.
Make a motion, then we go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11, parentheses A, parentheses 3, to consult with the attorney regarding pending litigation, and GS 143-318-11, parentheses A, parentheses 5, to discuss the purchase of real estate.
Will you hear a second? Aye.
All right.